Good afternoon, I'd like to call this special meeting to order please. And I ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Carol Brown, Maxine Drew.
Present.
Janie Humphries.
Present.
Ruthie Jones.
Present.
Wanda Brown and Paige.
Present.
Fabina Nguyen here. C.C.A.
Thank you. Now I take a motion for the approval of the special agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. All those in favor? All right. Those opposing, hearing none, so ordered. Thank you. Dr. Lane.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
Thank you all for carving time out of your day today to do really important budget work, where Dr. Mather and Ms. Woodbury are anticipating that we reach some decisions today so they can finalize preparing for your budget. So thank you for that time. I also want to thank Ms. Humphries. She started off our graduation season on Saturday, did a really nice job with our gateway to college graduates. We have seven graduates who have finished their high school diploma and now are -- three of the seven are moving forward to get their associate's degree at Donnelly. Several of the seven have college hours, so we were really pleased with that outcome. And graduation is a good time for us to be reminded, this is what we work for. So as we start the other ceremonies that start on Wednesday, I always like to remind myself, this is the big outcome, so enjoy them as we congratulate our nearly 1,000 graduates that we'll see over the next few days. So again, thank you for carving out time today, and I think Dr. Mather has planned the afternoon or whatever time we need to use today to get to some conclusions. So thank you and your team for your work.
Thank you, Dr. Lane. Dr. Lane said, "I don't think I have anything other than graduation," and that was wonderful what she said, so we'll just move forward. Reports to the superintendent.
All right, Board. We are here today to talk about budget and prove budget development that will impact your fiscal year '19 budget as presented by Dr. Mather and Ms. Woodbury.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
Hope everybody enjoyed the afternoon today. I'm gonna stand up here so I can kinda talk to you. Sorry, the packet is so large, but I was gonna run two slides per sheet, but then you just couldn't see the stuff, so I figured you'll all see it, so it's forty pieces, so sorry about that. We'll try to get there as much as we can. As Dr. Lane had indicated, we do have a lot of information to get through today, hopefully make some final decisions. We don't have a budget form yet, but anticipate them, and we are trying to prepare your budget so that we can get those into the 200 papers of forms when we get them, however, once everything's finalized. So I will walk us through quite a bit of this information today, and you guys can keep us on track with time. I know that lunch is coming, so you'll just have to wave your arms if people get hungry or if you have kids or anything, and we're gonna be up here too. So. Things we want to accomplish today, I just wanna remind you about the anticipated funds that we'll be getting for the next school year from Senate Bill 423. So we'll review that, the information that you have seen. Nothing new has come from that, a couple nuances that we'll talk about. Also want to confirm decisions from you, some things you've kinda told us, and I just wanna confirm those decisions, and other things I'm gonna be asking you to make some decisions about, and then we can see how that impacts your overall budget. So these are your board priorities. I would like to put that up, that's for your reference. I, oops, sorry about that. I kept the budget policies up there for you, so you can see the budget planning policy, that's kinda what we're doing. We keep going through this planning process, it's your budget, we're trying to put it together. And then, once we have the operating budget in place, we will then implement your budget, so that's in that form. Wanted to bring this back, I've given it to you before, but as you remember, Senate Bill 423, they had passed what was intended for school finance, and then what they actually approved. They have since fixed that, so the intended really is the budget at this particular point, unless something changes, which could potentially change in seasons. Just wanted to point out to you all that, right here, we talked a lot about this, and we're gonna come back to it, and based on this form, this $8.8 million includes $1.5 million of special education money. Again, those figures haven't changed. Those numbers are actual numbers from what's called the SO-66, the superintendent's report that is submitted prior to our audit. So those numbers are higher because we lost money in the audit, and I wanted to point that out, but those numbers are accurate, except we won't get that much. And I'll show you again how much we're actually wanting to get. So that will be approved. So this is, I showed this to you as well, this slide, before on page eight. What I wanna point out there is that down here in the audit actuals, this was, we estimated this amount prior to even getting the legal max. But the legal max is a letter that will receive from KSD once the audit's completed. So we didn't have our audit till, starting in January, I think they ended completing it in March. I think we just got the legal max about a week ago. But we were estimating about a $3 million loss in our audit. That is based on student count, and it's based on all of the weights. So we've had all that with you in the past, indicated so that $8.89 million's gonna be reduced by that $3 million.
Nothing added. I should know this answer, but I don't. When we vote for Senate Bill 423, we're counting on that $8 million. With the audit, we come back as whatever you said, six, right? Where does that surplus money go?
So these are estimates, the $8 million, based on that SO-66, so I don't know that there's necessarily a surplus.
Well, we appropriate that amount of money.
It would stay in the KSD. That would stay by KSD.
So they keep it. Hmm, that's interesting.
So then, I keep saying this again too, because this is why the audit is so critically important, is what I say over and over to the staff. The audit is essential, because everything is an estimate until the audit. You guys have done your job appropriating the funds, but unless we have the kids here and we have them identified as either at risk, ELL kids, all of the various weights, you have some fluctuation in your actuals, so your actuals are gonna be less based on the audit. So, wanna start out with this being kinda the new slide going forward, and we wanna start confirming some of the decisions. Again, a lot of this information isn't new information that you haven't heard me talk to you about, but we just want confirmation on some of it. The very first question I put in red is, I wanna confirm with you all that we do not want a tax increase. I've heard you say that, but I just wanna make confirmation with the board that that's the first step to it. Everything we're going to do today is that that's still the case, no mill levy increase.
Yeah, that's right.
That's correct.
So that means everything on that. But if you would've said no, we could've changed that. So no tax increase, that's confirmed. The second part of that question then is, in order not to have that mill levy increase, we have to transfer the $6 million into the supplemental general fund, or else we're gonna have a significant mill increase or tax increase. That's the money I've been talking to you about. So we're gonna talk about that first. Next page, we'll come back to the decision pages, and I inserted them throughout your presentation, so hopefully you don't have to go back and forth, but. This is a chart that I showed you, and I had it actually live last time we were looking at it, and I was changing the dollar amounts in here, so this basi -- I'm doing it, sorry. This basically is kinda just the history of what our budget authority is for the LOB, which is your supplemental general fund. That $51 million, I reduced it, because after the audit, we've reduced it from what we originally published, which was $52 million, well over $52 million, but when your general fund is lower because of the audit, you gotta reduce your supplemental general fund. So it kinda impacts both. So I reduced that to $51 million, had our cash, and our state aid, and state aid might be adjusted slightly, and our taxes still at $9.5 million for this year. That's what we budgeted to collect. We don't know if we'll collect all of that. I'm actually hoping we'll collect a little more than that. I think we probably will, because collections have been better, but we have to at least budget what the forms tell us. So long and short of it, if you remember, we're gonna have $831,000 now, if all stands with those numbers exactly by the beginning of the next fiscal year. Well, $800,000 is not enough not to raise the mill levy. What we need, if you go to the bottom chart, that number right there was the one that kept changing, because I have all of those numbers the same in here, what we collected in taxes and our budget authority, total resources, is that $6.3 million actually keeps us pretty flat. Right now, taxes get collected more, that number goes down. So I'm kinda banking on around the $6 million figure still. That should keep us flat. Does that make sense? Questions about that?
You just add $300,000 to it.
I put it there to get the mill levy down, I kept playing with that number again after I changed the budget authority after the audit, to raise it from the $6 million to $6.3. A little bit risky, but I think that I just believe our taxes will be collected a little bit better, so I'm just keeping it around in a plan.
You call LOB supplemental.
Uh-huh, okay, supplemental general fund.
Which is a percentage of the budget.
General fund, yeah, that's right. We're at the max, 30 percent.
Dr. Mather, you helped the board see where that $6.3 comes from.
Throughout the presentation. That's the whole goal today, is where are we gonna bundle this stuff?
Right.
And where I need your all's direction. Yeah, set the stage so you can see. So right there, we know we need the LOB. So these are the must fund things that we've talked about. Didn't add anything, haven't changed anything, these are the basic must fund.
Hate to stop you. How can you go back to the previous slide, because you're saying $4.165 million coming from Senate Bill 423, but you have here, just explain, you say revenue state aid, 35.6.
So this doesn't have the general fund money in it. So the $4 million that you're referencing is the general fund money. The $35 million that you're referencing here is the state aid that we get on the supplemental general fund. It's the amount of state aid that we get based on what our budget authority is. So when our general fund eventually goes up, your budget authority for your LOB will go up, your state aid will go slightly up, or vice versa.
Explain why we get that state aid.
Why we get that, so it's based on poverty. So if your supplemental general fund is all based on poverty, it's an extremely difficult formula, but essentially what they're trying to do is provide equalization at the 80th percentile across all districts. So they rank all 250 school districts based on that, and we get a percentage based on that ranking of state aid. Meaning the more wealthy communities can generate more taxes on each mill that they put out versus the less wealthy communities, we generate less money on our mills, so we get more state aid for the less wealthy community versus a mill.
And the wealthy communities do not get that state aid.
They get much less. Some don't get hardly any, depends on how much they can generate from their laws.
Thank you.
So when we say poverty, oftentimes we're talking about the economic status of our kids. That is not the case here. When she's referencing poverty, it's about our property wealth.
Property wealth.
The value, the assessed value of our property, just wanna make that.
So I'll give you an example, I've said this before, but here in one county, one mill for us generates about $700,000, depending on where that assessed valuation falls, versus a neighboring county, say South, somewhere one mill might generate about $3 to $4 million per mill, for every mill. So you can see the separation from $700,000 to $300,000, but the same mill will generate.
Thank you for explaining that.
So these are the must fund things that we talked about at the last budget meeting that we were having. The top line that we're talking about right now, that's cash, and we need cash for the LOB, for the supplemental general fund. I have cut $6 million in there, not the $6.3. We'll talk about these other things as well, but it totals around $11.4 million. I'll come back to how we're going to, I'm gonna ask you how we're going to fund it, but I want you to be familiar with that. But that's, when I come back to saying, remember folks, we need to talk about that $6 million, that's what, are we all good there? Okay. So the next thing we need to talk about on that must fund list is your, is the health insurance. So, good news is that last time we talked about health insurance increase, it was over 70 percent. Right now, C-Biz is working diligently with Cross Blue Shield, we've got it down to 5.2 percent increase, which is really excellent in the industry right now. They're still working on our behalf, on the board's behalf, so can't guarantee it'll go less than that, but wanted you to at least be aware of it. What I've given to you in your packet on the next page is just the reflection of that increase at this point, and you can see all the things that go into paying premiums. Basically, I highlighted for you right down in your lower right-hand corner, the 5.2 percent. That's where we stand as of today. Negotiations are still continuing, so again, that could change slightly, but not likely to go up.
So which column are we concentrating on?
This one here. Just look at the bottom. I wanted to show you all of this stuff, when we go over the claims ratio, all of the fees, I wanted to show you everything that goes into what constitutes our total at the bottom, the bottom line. So here, we're at 6.4 percent, and now we're at 5.2. So we're gonna go from $28.79 to $30 million in total insurance coverage.
So, important point, I think, where you were going, the board spends $30 million on health insurance out of your general fund.
For individual plans for all employees.
You could do less than that, but the board is selected to provide every staff member a single plan, so that's important. You might circle that number, keep that in your head, so when your employees are asking you about compensation, we sometimes forget to say, you know, we're contributing this much more in your benefit package, $30 million.
So that's the health insurance. That dollar amount is about $1.5 million, you'll see that later, but that's about $1.5 million increase right now.
Let me ask this, and I hate, I should've asked you why we're on that. Our Blue Cross Blue Shield has probably reduced to overall because our co-pay went up. Have we looked at, I'm not suggesting we increase co-pays, because they're crazy, but are our, is our, is the package competitive? Is the package comparable? I mean, we don't know this, so we need to know. So unless we have somebody who is a employee at your base and tell me, "Put your co-pay when you go to dump." So as we move forward, have, is that something you adjust as you, is the system doing that?
Well, actually, there's an insurance committee that represents every employee group member, and they meet on a regular basis throughout the year with C-Biz, they look at the competitiveness of those plans.
Okay.
And they make decisions together, that group, that committee, on whether they wanna go out to bid, and actually see if they can get a better price, or if they feel like they got the most competitive price now. They also look at all of the components of those insurance plans, things like the premium or the deductibles that individuals have to play. They also look at the coverage that people have to cover on the pocket. They look at all of those components of the health plan. There was no changes to the health plan with the 5 percent increase, which is good, because right, it's pretty stripped down right now, meaning how much you pay for restrictions, meaning how much you pay for deductible, all of that. So the committee felt it was pretty competitive and wanted to stay there, so they made the recommendation not to bid at this point. C-Biz continues to negotiate on our behalf, which is a good thing, on behalf of the board. They will come also and provide a presentation at the time of the renewal to give you a lot more detail on things about it. Okay, so that's the insurance. We'll talk about the sub program. So the district's taking on the sub program, so there'll be an increased cost for that.
How much?
Am I gonna tell you?
Thank you, Mr. [inaudible].
I'll get that to you.
It didn't sound like you were gonna say it. I'm a small print.
I'm trying to get there. I printed a figure for you, don't look up there. What I wanted to show you on this was that some time ago, I gave you a cost comparison of what it would take for a school district to run it, as compared to Morgan Hunter running it '16, '17, the difference was about $950,000 for us to run it at the time. The most recent presentation I've given you, I'm just taking copies of the presentations I've given to you before, so you can see that no change. Was up there February. If we were to run the program, assuming the same number of needed subs, all of those things, added costs that we've gone over in full detail is about $571,000 higher for us to run the program. That didn't get us through the year, I mean, it's obviously not through the entire year yet. So what I have always put on here for is about $725,000, somewhere in the middle. Until we actually start running it again, all of the fees that I showed you, broken out for you, I believe are accurate, but that, the big variable with sub cost is how many subs do we need? And that changes every day, every year. So I'll kinda just put those numbers in the middle, and send $700,000 additional dollars to actually run the program. Could be more, could be less.
So, this, this is $725,000 more than if we had taken the Morgan Hunter contract.
Right. If you look back on this page, I want me to point out a couple things. We've done a full presentation on all of this for you, so you can see the added costs, that's why I put this presentation back up there for you. Many of the costs that are built into their fee, Morgan Hunter, we had to pick up, so all of the payroll taxes, we had to pick up that. We were just paying Morgan Hunter flat, we even picked, that was embedded for their fee. The biggest things for us are gonna be unemployment claims likely to go up, but the bigger one is probably gonna be capers. We have to look at the capers fee and/or rate that we have to pay on individual people. I don't know how to assess that right now, because it's gonna be 12 percent to 30 percent, depending on the individual and when they retire from the school district.
I have a question about that, because a lot of people who subbed didn't take the insurance from Morgan Hunter, because it was so high.
So this isn't the insurance, this isn't insurance, this is just a fee when you, it's called working after retirement. So if we have a retired teacher.
Capers.
That comes back to your, come back to your district. So if you come back and you're subbing for us and you've retired from the school district, there's a capers fee, or rate, is what they call it, that is assessed based on the earnings. So it's anywhere from 12 to 30 percent of the earnings of that employee, depending on when they retire, or which of other variables. So it's not insurance, it's actually just a fee for working after retirement. So for example, with capers, recently just changed for subs, if somebody retires today, this year, from the school district, they have to wait 180 days before they can even sub in our school district. They can go sub somewhere else, can't sub here for a 180-day wait period, just maybe. And we can't ask them to sub. We will impact their capers negatively what we do, so we cannot encourage them to say, "Hey, you wanna come sub for us?" Because it looks like a prearranged arrangement. We used to do that. Here's the bill, we used to do that all the time. Folks would retire, we'd put it to the board, that they were gonna come back and sub, and now they're saying, "Cannot do that." So that's just a fee associated with working after retirement for retired employees.
I think what Ms. Brownlee Page was referencing, your fringe benefit cost, you've included health insurance.
Right.
So security Medicare, that's something you can't control.
That's just the federal taxes, right.
But that's what I think she was referencing, so that figure may...
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about. Because they offered it, from the people we talked to, said it wasn't beneficial, it's too high. Now, you put it down here. But a lot of people didn't take it up when Morgan Hunter had it, because they felt it was too expensive.
But Morgan Hunter's probably run industry, right? So that's an option for employee to take it. For in our situation, if we had an employer that works an average of 30 hours or more as a sub or any employee, we're required to provide health insurance option to them. We will be required. So we have to track all the employees now, to see how many hours they're working. Now, we'll try to manage that and keep them under a certain amount, but if they work an average of 30 hours per week or more, we have to provide health insurance. So my idea is, I took Morgan Hunter's list of all the subs they had, and I looked at how many hours they worked over the course of the period of time, and I came up with only these numbers, I'm remembering this from months ago, that 70 employees had worked over like 1,000 hours, individuals, over 1,000 hours, which put them into the category of having to do, be paid or offered health insurance. So we have to pay, we pay on all of our employees if they work that, if they're eligible employees for health insurance. So I took that 70 number, and that's how I came up with that figure.
Okay.
Could be more, could be less.
But to be more accurate, if they give you the information, could you find out for Morgan Hunter, how many people actually took advantage of the insurance?
But it's very different, Ms. Page, I don't...
Well, I know you're saying, "We have to."
Yeah.
And I know they offered, I'm just curious to see if anybody took it.
Yeah, I don't know if they'll tell us, I'd be happy to ask, but that would be very different from what we have to do.
Okay, no, I...
Because if they're eligible, we gotta give them the opportunity for it. So I took the lower end of the number, that 70 people that, based on the hours they worked that year, this current year, I don't know if they'll work that many hours next time or not, then that became 70 people, and I had to then calculate health insurance costs for that. That adds to our premium.
Question, are you asking for how many that they, that worked for Morgan Hunter, or for those who were here in our district?
No, no.
Who worked for Morgan Hunter. Just overall.
Who actually took advantage of the insurance thing. I understand the difference in how you do it, I'm just curious, I'd like to know. From the people I talked to, they said they didn't, they felt it was too high.
And that may be the case, they may felt like they didn't get the benefit.
You know, they offered, but it wasn't beneficial financially for them to do it.
Right.
So I'm just curious, how many people? And then, in terms of unemployment claim, I never knew if you subbed, you could get unemployment.
Well, we have lots of folks that try to claim unemployment, even if, depending on the hours they work, they don't always win the claim, but they can certainly try to apply for it.
Are we required to subside that contribution for every employee?
We have always subside that contribution.
Yeah, required.
For just in case, when people file claims. Doesn't mean those win, our job is if they're eligible, then we don't, can't fight it, but if they're not eligible...
But budgetarily, you have to include it.
We have to pay on first wages, we pay on early separators, we pay an appointment on that too.
Right. It's required.
So your 41-262 is a serious estimate on employment, and your...
And that's work comp, is that 41?
Okay.
I looked at that, right, and 41.
Uh-huh, and your 251-697, the health insurance is a serious estimate, serious meaning it could be anything. You're figuring at the single rate of 500, off of it, right?
Right. Just figure here, this is just the payroll taxes with FICA, and I figured it at 10.65 percent.
No, 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 we don't, we don't question the Social Security, the FICA, the, we're questioning the figure for health insurance.
The health insurance one was the one that, yeah, based on our premium, was $6,000.
Here's my question, if a person works, whatever you said, 30 hours, they are entitled. Now, is that a monthly, is this a 12-month estimate?
It's a look back period of over 30 hours, so it's not based on necessarily an annual estimate, because I have to, I'm guessing on the number of people, and so it's not just once a week, one week, they could work one for 40 hours.
Why does it say they work all month? So you take monthly premiums, you don't pay weekly.
I just took the, right, that's the annual cost, yeah.
So that's an annual, okay. So someone could work six months, then drop out, and that number's, yeah, fuzzy. So at the end of the day, the difference that Ms. Humphries and you are saying, the difference is, is a million dollars, it's, it's up and down, well, let's say, how much above it, how much below it?
Until we actually do it, again.
Exactly.
We're not gonna know exactly. But I have to be able to estimate and share with you as the board to be prepared.
And that's what we're here for.
Right, 300,000 higher, 500,000 higher, whatever comes in there.
So we're clear on that.
Everybody's good with where we got the estimates on?
One thing, Board, that I've been talking to Dr. Mather about is, in the past, substitutes would run through your payroll system, they will moving forward, but I've asked for them to think about how they provide you a regular report, so you can see these costs outside of everybody else's payroll. Otherwise, you won't. And I think you have a desire to monitor that, so moving forward, they'll talk about what kind of report they can provide regularly, so you can see the ongoing substitute costs.
So, that's the sub program. And then, as we get into compensation, we've already talked with all of you about compensation for negotiations. We had other compensation, I'm gonna put you, we'll have other compensation conversations with some data Q-4 for the classified side of that, I'll see here a little bit. And we've already talked in, about negotiations, so I don't want to go over that publicly right now. So the money that you have available to spend, that I've come up with, Kristen and I, there's $4.2 million, just from your new funds. The $4 million is the money that I share we did, that we have been anticipating having to move money into the LOB to keep the mill levy flat. We have to guesstimate that at the beginning of each year. We guesstimated 4 million, I need 6, to keep the mill levy flat. So that's been in the budget, so we can transfer that into contingency and right back out in July in order to keep the mill levy flat. Of course, I'm 2 million shy, if you look at the 4, I need 6. So we try to anticipate that, that's why at the last budget meeting, I said, "You need to be thinking about FY '22. You have to think in advance about keeping that cash, keeping..." You have to think in advance about keeping that cash, keeping cash in the cash balance for your LOB. If not, this is the dilemma we get into. We drain the cash out of the LOB. Then we have, the only way to fix it is to put cash in it or to increase your middle levy, which we're trying not to do. The 1.5 million in insurance claims reimbursement, I shared with you. I thought it'd be about 1.6. I think that we are going to be pretty confident in being able to get reimbursement. We've had fairly decent claims a year thus far, unless that changes drastically in a month or two. We should be able to get a reimbursement that we can apply, the board that chooses can apply that essentially now to the cost of the increase. So that could be offset. Because I said the cost of the increase is 1.5 million. I believe it's 1.502, 244, if I remember right. So that, I think it'll offset. But I'm counting this money. That refund that we get, that amount, can only be used for insurance, health insurance. So you're going to want to use it to offset that increase.
So translated, if that savings comes through, that 28 to 30 million, it may be a 5.2 increase, but we don't have to spend any new money.
Yes.
Okay. Translated, sorry.
Well, we'll be able to cover that with that 1.5. You won't have to come up with a new one.
What's your timeline, Dr. Mather, for affirming that amount?
We should know in the next month or so. We're just watching the claims loss ratio each month, see this is what you're going to...
Prior to the board approving their budget?
Yeah.
Because with new claims going...
I'm pretty confident.
Remember, you have a January to December...
Hope that's the insurance. Academic, not academic, annual.
The million dollars that you see up here for what I'm calling staffing enrollment projections, we always set money aside because of the audit. You never know how many new teachers we're going to have to have based on PTR. So we're trying to make the 23 to 1, 21 to 1 at diploma plus staffing. Always keep money in your budget in case we have to have more teachers. So if that's 13 to 15 more staff that we need to add, that's going to cover it. No new money, which is good. Actually, I have a little more money.
And PTR stands for?
Pupil-teacher ratio. Thank you. Keep doing that. So there shouldn't be any new money, but I want you to be aware. Because I talk to the board every year about having money in there for these kinds of things. It may be that you don't increase staffing, which means we're not growing, or, you know, we don't have a need for any other teachers or whatever. That would be, I guess, a good thing, too, if we got a fiscal recovery. Okay? So we should be, no new money. Then what I added was a million dollars out of your contingency because obviously that equals 10.7, and we needed 11.4. So I just put a million dollars in there. I guess I could have put 700,000 out of your contingency fund, and that would have been equaling it. But that's the must funds and the money that we're going to come up with to try to help cover that. I also included, sorry, I included early childhood teachers. We talked about that with adding five positions there for planning time issues. Just want to have that in there, which we needed. I know they're working diligently with early childhood staff to see if they can try to make sure that's covered, either through added FTEs or another way. But I felt it's better today to have it in there than not have it in there for point of conversation. So that is part of the 11.4 million.
Dr. Mather, before you start on the next page, can we just stop for lunch?
Sure. It might be a good time to stop. Can't remember what the next line was.
Request.
Request, so good time to stop.
Grab lunch and then...
Come back and do a working lunch.
Thank you.
When you want, I can serve.
Oh, no, no, no. Thank you. Appreciate you. Reserve it in the name of your date. I said, "Do you want my line?"
The broth. It's a turkey.
I don't need it. He's got it. I can do it. It's fine. I have to feel the difference with...
Is Greg texting you? What'd you say?
He wanted to know what those sandwiches is.
Turkey with red onion.
What was?
Red onion.
It's called, but they say they're beer, they've got the name on it.
I tried to eat before.
Have it for dinner, then.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Susan. She's the one. You need all your energy to do this, bud.
Oh, yes. This should be fun. Should be. So they were in code. The names were in code. Sierra. Message.
Ready, Miss Jones?
Yep.
Here you are.
All right, so that's our decision so far. No tax increase. I'm going to make an assumption, but I don't want to, so we didn't write it up there. All the must funds or funding, is that correct? Must funds. All these things. We've got a fund. We could put that on our decision more than, trying to make sure I don't miss something. Or at least right now.
Well, we haven't determined what the item for compensation is, so when you say must, but you're saying in general.
Right.
Okay. Got it.
For classified, we're going to look for them those in a little while.
I know.
All right. I just want to make sure before we move forward. So what we're going to talk about now, so we moved through the first half pretty quick, and I'll try not to drag out the second half, but I tried to capture everything, I think I did, but if it didn't, you're going to have to let me know, that you all have asked about. And we'll try to walk through each one of these things, and I've got an estimated cost.
No, we're there to be, but you mentioned the garden program.
Uh-huh. And it's in here, and we'll talk about that.
And we also mentioned the five holidays.
It's in there. Next page. I'm doing good. Two for two so far. I may have missed something, too, so hopefully... So we're going to go through each one of those things so you all can have an understanding of costs associated with that, and then want to make decisions about what you want to do. What you want to do, or how you want to fund. Okay? So the first thing we're going to talk about, the page, is the holiday page that you talked about and asked for. This is the list of things that we're going to go through, probably not in detail on every single one, but I gave you all the figures that I could come up with, and I think, and I'll try to explain those to you, and how I came about that figure.
So this is public discussion?
Well, I thought about that, too. But the other thing is that there's not a tax for the compensation issue for this. But these are just figures that you asked me to collect.
But we also asked for you the 261 to identify who those people are.
And I've done that for you, too. Thank you. And they're not individuals, they're classified employers. So I think you should be fine for that. So this is your nerves?
Just a point of clarification. This is the list, this isn't, "We can fund all these things."
So just the list?
Yeah.
But right now, it's the list of everything with dollars attached to it.
Right.
And then we'll have to come back and talk about that.
We've got something we did not discuss.
Yeah.
So we'll come back to, some did not agree to...
Yep. This is just your list of things that I heard, and if it's something you're not interested in, we'll get to the end of it, or if there's something we've missed, this is just a part of the conversation now. Okay?
I have a question. Okay. If you didn't add this one, but there is a summer youth program that Fredo and I have presented to the board at some point, and I didn't know if that would be included because it will cover 350 of our kids, and they're asking for some assistance.
And that, those are the kinds of things you're going to have to let us know. Now, remember, I shared with you, Statutory, we can't fund community programs. We cannot take taxpayer money and fund community burdens. But we can, these statutes generally provide transportation if there are kids, and I've done that for several community programs. We can't just give money to community-based programs.
No, no, no.
So just as you're thinking about what your requests are, I just want to keep reiterating that because it's my job to make sure you're aware of all of that. Okay? So this is the first section on the holiday pay that you asked for. What we did was we took to all of the employee groups that are less than 261 days, and calculated five holidays, which is where that figure is right there. And it just shows you how many employees, about 1,080 full. So that's not including anybody that's 261 or full-time, year-round, who gets holiday pay. But it's also not all of your under 261 employees. Because you have teachers, you have principals, assistant principals, coordinators. Actually, 80% of your workforce works less than 261 days or not year-round.
But this list did not previously get the five holidays.
Say that again.
This list previously did not get the five holidays.
Right. They do not currently get five holidays. None of those. 80% of your workforce does not get holiday pay.
So that includes those in the box below.
The reason the box below, which is I'm trying to get to, is I added all of the other people that are less than 261 also, and a full over $3 million, probably $3.4 million. This original list at the top was the groups that you asked me about that were less than 261, classified, so I pulled that.
But the people in the bottom are contracted annually.
Right.
And technically, they don't get it. Essentially, technically, they get paid for them. One can interpret...
They get a paycheck every two, every, twice a month, but they don't get paid for the holiday.
No, but when Martin Luther King Day shows up and we're closed, it's not deducted.
Their pay is spread over 12 months.
Exactly. No, directly, it's not deducted.
They're not paid for originally, spread over 12 months. So they're not being paid.
So I don't really know why you have this, the number, the box below. I don't know why you have that.
Because that's all of the employees that are currently not getting holiday pay. And if you pay for some, I want you as a board to be aware that others may ask for that, too. None of these people get holiday pay. Just because you get a semi-monthly pay doesn't mean you're getting paid for a holiday. It just means you get your same check every two weeks, right?
Right, but let's not...
But you're not getting holiday pay. You're not paid.
But we're not that technical because a teacher and a principal know, if the school is closed that day for Martin Luther King holiday, and I'll go back to what I said, that $100 a day, whatever, is not deducted. So in theory, one could interpret, in their check, they're paid for those days.
They can interpret it, but they're not paid for those days.
Sorry. You know, you're putting, you're threatening, which is fine, and if legally...
Listen, of course, you...
Correct. But we're not talking about people who get the paycheck of X. We're talking about the people who get the nutritional services.
You could take...
So we understand who we're talking about.
You could take a nutritional services employee and move them from an hourly employee and pay them semi-monthly, and then it would appear that they got paid for holidays, but they wouldn't get paid for holidays unless they're a year-round employee. It's how they get paid, so that's what I'm trying to differentiate.
No, we know what you're saying, but bottom line, they know they don't have any money on their check because they didn't go to work that day, they don't get paid. So we can call it any kind of thing you want. We respect you. But bottom line, they get no money.
Well, Ms. Page, let me try to also clarify the point. Teachers are paid for 186 days of work, period. They just happen to get their checks spread over 12 months. So you're right. When we have a holiday, they don't see a difference in their check, but they are not paid for the holiday.
We get that. All I'm saying is...
The point is, that Dr. Mather's trying to make, if you decide to pay holidays for some employees, other groups are going to want the same benefits. So you just have to be mindful of that.
So a parent is teacher works on a skip, not the school schedule?
They work on, I don't know what the parents are teachers, it depends on the employee. All of these people are under 261, so it's going to be 231, 21 to 11, 186.
Let's go back to teachers. By the 186 days, does that include Martin Luther King Day?
I don't know. The holidays. That's how many days they actually work.
It also does that.
I know that, man.
It doesn't include...
So I know 186. I just ask a question. But again, not to confuse the discussion, but we understand what we're saying and what we're asking of you. And it appears that the manner in which you're presenting it by saying you will have, and this is not what you're saying, it just appears that you will have conflict from teachers and principals. No, we understand what they understand. No, we understand what they understand, that they get paid or not get paid. But we also understand what a nutritional services person gets in their purse. So we understand what we're saying. But if we're gonna do holiday pay for nutritional services, transportation, all these people on this list, if you're gonna call it holiday pay, the other people are gonna say, why don't we get paid for our holidays? I know you're saying that nutritional services sees a smaller check if there's a snow day or something. Okay, we, we all, we all know that. But the teachers have to make up those days too. I mean, when you were working 186 days, you had to book 186 days. If you're working for nutritional services, you know each day you work, you're gonna make this much money. If there's a day you don't work, you know you won't. It's like almost all of the other service industries. Walmart, Target, P&amp;G, all those places. If one person gets holiday pay, they almost all do. But if there's a section of them that don't, they, their check's smaller. But, I mean, but I, as a teacher, I would say, wait a minute, you're saying that these people can have holiday pay, but I can't?
I don't agree with you, I respect your opinion. We could debate this all night, and we don't plan to be here all night. I understand what you're saying, but it's not right, they don't get anything. As a teacher, 'cause I was appalled, I thought they should've been paid. And we can argue the this or that, which we want, we'll just move on, and when it comes down to vote or whatever, we'll see how it flies.
We just want you to have an informed discussion.
Oh, yeah, we do. But I just don't agree with the way it's set up, but I respect that.
Okay? This was the other part of that with classified staff that actually are working 261 days, and by employee number, the number of folks that have to work year-round. And we could talk more about what that dollar figure represents, perhaps in the second session. But that would represent a compensation increase of some sort, 'cause you'd actually get that figured for you.
But you have listed that they already get it.
No.
What's that listed as?
They already get holiday pay, they work year-round. So they're already getting holiday pay, you'd ask me in a board meeting, so to get the number of classified employees that actually get holiday pay already, so would you have to provide a different compensation for them? If you counted holiday pay as compensation? So I got both pieces of data. Sure you have?
Why you put teachers twice?
So there's some people that work year-round, some people that don't work year-round in each department. So you'll see it on the last one.
Thank you.
I just put your policy of your holiday pay, put it in your packet, so you have it. I don't think, if anything you don't know on there, but I want you to be aware of it, so that's your pocket.
Question. Whatever action you take, is it, is it consistent with current policy?
Current policy, we don't pay non-261 employees holiday pay. So it says in here, eligible employees may be paid the regular rate of pay for holidays, eligible employees are 261. So you may have to make a tweak to it.
Yep, we need to know that going in.
Okay? So I don't have any other slides other than this one for the next piece, if we're ready to move on. Just keep all this information in your head, we'll come back to it as we need to. You mentioned the community yards project, I have mentioned to you that we cannot provide funds to the project. This dollar figure simply represent, is a, represents either hiring somebody, and have the district run the program as employee. That's what the 51,000 is estimated at, truly estimated, 'cause we'd have to figure out where that would land. So that's that dollar figure. And then the alternative school, I use that word loosely, 'cause you all didn't really define that. We just talked about alternative options. If you recall in the last budget meeting, and the only way I could really kind of figure out a number to put on that, was I looked at one of the smallest elementary schools and the staffing, which housed about 110, 110 kids, maybe staff or something, it's part of 100, and it cost about 1.3 million. That could be sized and changed, and you know, there's a lot of implications with this, because one, if you wanted truly to do a school, there'd be other costs, not in, like a building. You'd have to have a place to house, the board would have to determine that.
But Dr. Mather, I think the recommendation of how to deploy alternative will come from staff, come from Dr. Strickland, so right now, we're saying alternative options, one type for each one.
But it's important to understand the distinction, because it will change the cost.
Right, it'll go on, it's a bill. Uh-huh, thank you.
Now, when you have elementary or middle, are you saying then high school is already in the budget?
Uh, they have, they have Fairfax 100%.
So it's already in the budget, so.
Now, if you look down on your list, you'll see the expansion there.
Twenty-five kids, but overall, the larger picture of those, yes, they're Fairfax 100%.
And, and that is just, what, what, explain again that 1.3, what's that number?
Really, it was just generated off of what it would run this, what it would cost right now, currently today, to run a small elementary staff building. By just looking at staff, because I didn't wanna do too many staff.
Right.
So I did like eight teachers and administrator. So I looked at the smallest elementary school, so it cost about that amount. I'd have some things to anchor to, that makes sense. So those are those giants. I think we talked, talked about, talked about increase for classified. Oh, maybe we didn't talk about that, so I probably messed this up. So we, you all will have to have a conversation about classified, you'd asked me about what it would be for classified, and for administrators separately, the 80 dollar figures, we can talk more about what that looks like in the next session. Those are estimates, well, estimates, so, that can go up or down, away. The next thing that's on your packet, but not on my list, but I took it off the list, was the recruiting retention dollars. I've had conversations since the last board meeting about this, and I know that, I believe, Ms. Folks and Ms. Beach are coming before you at some point during a presentation, so I'm not gonna get into their, whatever their stuff they're gonna cover. From a financial perspective, and talking and reviewing them, initially I thought we would need at least a year or two of this matching money. So they think right now they don't need any new money, which is good, it's good news, so I took it off the list of things that we would need to fund. And then, where it says Title II A, although it's kind of in a peach color, can't really see it, those dollars are gonna be taken out of the Title II A grant as they were this year, and should be funded, is what I'm gonna get. Now, there was a slight cut in Title II A, but it shouldn't impact that. So we should be able to re, continue to fund those with existing dollars. And down here, you see that they made, that, talking with Ms. Folks and Ms. Beach, they talked about reallocating a little bit of this paid master's matching program, where they wouldn't have as many people. They can share those details, I don't have that with me, but perhaps reallocate a portion of that to relocation, incentive like, giving a, a dollar amount to have folks move to Kansas City, so they could try to get outreach from other states.
So let me clarify what I think I'm hearing. The overall budget is flat.
Yep.
Uh, but what they, might, what we might do with it could change to it, up to it, including the areas in gray, which the board had indicated the interest in discussing.
Well, the board's good with that.
So 1.8 was what they have this year, they can do the same thing next year. We'll learn more about it on the 29th.
Right, and then we will clarify what the plan is, or even how to use the 1.8, 1.9.
Right, that'll be on the 29th.
Because the, uh, there may be some questions about some of those.
Yeah, and that's a program, I put it in front of you because I had it on your list before, about 250,000 or 270, I can't remember, and one did you see was coming off of that, it should be one.
So before you move on, Board, is there anything that you see that's currently on there that you want to be sure that the team comes before you on the 29th reconsidering? Meaning, do you want that relocation money still on there, or is that something that you don't want them to entertain as they're planning for you?
Where is that?
In the gray.
The gray is actually not funded, that was things that were, this is an actual slide from a board presentation. So those things aren't funded. 1.8 of the things up here, they would like to use a portion of that, $200,000 for relocation.
So, and my question is, do you want them to consider relocation funding in their plan? Yes or no? If they, if no, then they don't need to spend any money working on it. You say no? No, no, okay, so that's helpful.
That's all I needed to know.
When they're planning, they don't need to bring strategies for you on that, 'cause we're not gonna consider it. Okay, thank you.
I've got another question. Doesn't the, uh, don't they get their loan forgiven by the Feds?
Yeah. Those are qualified. Yeah, we're not, we're not doing those three at the bottom. That's kind of grayed out. It's grayed out. I shouldn't say what you did. Grayed it for us. Okay, no relocation, I'm just getting notes so we don't forget. So then the counselors, there's a conversation about counselors. So what I wanted to do is show you a couple things. Let's talk about counselors, you go to page 28. One of the original board meetings, we talked about counselors, the board already approved this breakdown, this ratio, with this adding counselors. That's taking care of, not asking for funds for that. But I wanted you to see that, that that's in there, because we, the board had discussed creating some kind of ratio that made sense on how to allocate counselors. But you all had asked me about two counselors per building, so I wanted to give you those figures for two counselors per building. Now, high schools already have three counselors, so kind of took them out of the equation.
Can we go back to your other slide, please, excuse me? Now, you're saying, here's the ratio you said the board approved.
Right.
Is that being met currently?
Yes, they've got some vacancies they're filling with their new ads still, but that right there is what we've been working off, so they'll have a total of the 62 plus the 8, 70 counselors also. So they'll have four free K, they'll have 38 elementary, 13 middle school, and they've got the 15 currently placed.
Wait a minute. Are they, are, you said there's some vacancies?
Just that people have vacancies from here, or people that resign, so that number at the bottom doesn't change, it's just that somebody.
The 62 are in place right now.
Uh-huh. That was what was in place, actually, when we did this, back in July. We've added these over the, over the current, the current year.
Okay, stop. Why did you add them?
Because the board approved the ads for these counselors.
To meet the ratio, got it.
Yes.
And you added them in, on paper, but you may not have added them in body, because you didn't have them.
Yeah, both, but yes. Some people were filled, and some people are not filled, because we didn't.
Okay, thank you.
That's what we're functioning off of, is essentially 78 positions, based off of that ratio. But prior to that, and some of you weren't involved in that conversation, back in June and July, you asked for two per school. So I was trying to give you what that would look like, based on what we currently have. Okay, based on the four free K, so if you added two per school, you'd have to have four more. You had 38 elementary, you've got one site, there's one for every elementary site. Except you've got seven sites that have currently two counselors, so you'll have to add one to that site, right? So you'd have to have 23 more counselors to get every elementary school to two. Middle school, you have three sites that don't have two counselors, so you'd have to have three more to get them to two counselors. So that's actual of 20, 30, 30 more counselors for 1.8 million. That's easy.
That's close, I mean, it's 30.
Thirty counselors, and that's to get for two per building, not using that ratio that I showed you, but just to do what you asked me to do.
Other than one or two elementary, do most of the elementary schools have a similar amount of students?
The larger elementary schools have two counselors.
The question was, other than Parker, I mean, a cou- well, a couple of them are like really small elementary. Other than those, is there a, for the most part, the elementaries are similar in population?
Similar, with the exception of the large ones, Florida, the large ones, like Weyer, Chelsea, all have two counselors in a very large apartment.
You've got, they range from 360, 370, all the way to 720.
For a middle school?
For an elementary.
An elementary school.
So as you're replacing buildings, we're trying to get to a more average size of 550, 575 for elementary. So you have a, a large variance in your elementary populations per building.
So are you taking that consideration in, perhaps that elementary needs to have three instead of?
Well, if, if the board were to say, we want to have that allocation, then the team would then take that funding and distribute those positions in a balanced way. So a building that has 720 kids wouldn't have two, we'd have to look at that.
Right, so, uh, just for a number of purposes and discussion purposes, that's what I thought you would do.
Right. Bottom line is 1.8 million to add the counselors, and then the distribution would be based on the buildings.
And are those ratios accepted in the field? And that's what.
Nationalized, we got, and some people are doing, get it to being those student services.
Okay. We need those for the answers.
Yep. Questions about that? Good? Another thing with social workers, another item that came up. The social workers. So I wanted to talk a little bit about what that would look like. So I'm gonna do the same thing for you, just to try to give you some information. We currently have 20 social workers, they're all special education. I'm gonna work with special education kids, but I want you to be aware that we do have 20 social workers. So one per building is 42, and then that count for preschool kids. And one per building, day 12, is about 2.7 million dollars. That's the first example. Then I can look at the Senate Bill 43, the mental health component. And I'll show you some figures specifically to that, but I just took out about 10 positions that could be funded with that money. And all I essentially did, was subtract on my, so 1.8 to put one per building. Then I wanted to just give you another option that made sense logically. If you didn't wanna do one per building, then I did, well, day five, you would have one social worker per every two buildings. There's no logic to that one way or the other, just trying to reduce your cost a little bit. And then one social worker for middle schools, one social worker for each high school, droughts at the 21 social workers needed. Take off the 10 being funded from the mental health, on top of that minute, droughts your cost to 525,000. Right? Does that make sense?
Yes.
But it doesn't take into account those 700.
Those two middle schools.
No, I mean, this is well, this is based, I'm trying to figure out if you hire, how many social workers you hire, some logical way to give you a, but it's not based on a ratio. I actually did that too, but, you know, it just increases the number of social workers, so. Trying to give you a couple options on that. Here's the mental health kind of component, that's the, uh, part of the Senate Bill language, I just gave that to you. But this is the Iowa program, and Senate 11, but one has to coordinate the program according to the language, from my understanding, so those would be the schools that would get, uh, social workers. Of course, we'd take that into account when you're distributing, you'd get funded in addition to social workers.
Was there any reason why they chose the particular schools that they had?
Um, I think that they were looking at Peters and into a particular cluster, to my knowledge.
They, no, they started in that direction, Dr. Mather, but Octane Australia, we'll have him come, and he can answer that specifically, a committee examined it, and it's not based on Peter Patterson, but we'll have him come talk about that.
So the only thing, from a financial perspective, I think it's, so this is a one-year thing. And I know there's talk about, I could do two and three, so guaranteed one year. So if you hire 10 social workers out of this, you gotta be able to cover them the next year, or we have to rip them, eliminate them. Just so you know, it's a one-year thing, but I think you have a capital number, you're considering social workers. Questions about that? Good?
Those 20 guarantee compliance with all special ed requirements?
Say more about your question.
Only can support, I can, what's that called?
Uh-huh. Special ed has certain compliance.
Right.
Rules.
Right, rules, right.
We say we have twenty right now, and for the most part, they all service special ed, special ed. So they, we can, they must continue to serve special ed. If our special ed population increases, we're still covered by those twenty.
That's how much it increases, I suppose.
Co-op would then have to figure out how to address that.
And we need a little bit more information on that co-op thing, to clarify-
How that works.
The roles, please.
Sure.
Okay, to the next. Uh, Dr. Mather pointed out, I set up here just this high school, um, FLC expansion, that's the dollar figure that Requish gave me to expand it by twenty-five additional kids. They're only servicing contractually seventy-five kids, so it'd be about $10,000,000, I'd just control that program a little bit, that serves.
And Fairfax has the capacity?
Said they do. To expand it to a hundred, a hundred kids.
And their facility is-
The facility's something that I would encourage the board to look at down the road.
So there could be an additional cost, someplace down the road. Okay, let's put it out there.
Okay, then I just put this up here because at my point, the board had asked about it. Don't know what you want to do with it, just put it up there for your information, is reducing the pupil teacher ratio in kindergarten and first grade to nineteen to one, just put that dollar figure so you have it. That's what it would cost, and hopefully they do that.
What is it now?
Eighteen, uh, twenty-one to one, so it's okay.
That was just a dip.
Twenty-one to one. So here's my calculations for kindergarten one, just so you know, starting to count up what we've done, I showed you all the different PPRs, so we're twenty-one to one. Figure out the debt works for nineteen to one, we'd have to hire seventeen more FTEs or teachers, for an estimated cost of ninety-fourty-seven. They do that fifty different ways, different PPRs, so I wanted to show you that.
Sidebar over here that we're having, had, had had. What is the ratio, I don't know what the desired ratio is, but it's a real ratio, and what do you say, middle school, high school?
What I could say is what we staff now-
Some classes are going to be much higher than that.
Some classes are going to be larger than what we staff. We actually calculate staffing on twenty-three to one.
Okay, but we can't have the forty-five to one. So, so is that, what's our desire? In high school, middle school?
Twenty-three to one is what we currently staff.
And, and what is the real cost of getting there? To get to, not the real cost, the estimated cost.
To get to twenty-three to one for secondary, that's what we staff at right now. So I'm not providing information on reducing that PPR.
No, you're not reducing, just getting it there.
You're talking about for every single class.
I think those are building decisions.
Yeah, I think what you might have brought to mind is that some of the classes are larger, depending on how they build their schedules.
Yeah, we had that conversation, but forty-five to one is-
I, I don't-
No matter what schedule you're on.
Well, you take a band class, some of those have to be-
That's different.
Yeah, but, but you're right, like a social studies or science class like that, I think we, when we had pulled to see how many classes were actually at that large a number to give us all a sense of-
Right.
How to insert a resource in there to ensure that it is much lower.
Sure there's a price tag in that.
I'm sorry.
I'm sure there's a price tag to that. What is that price tag?
Well, the challenge, what we have to see is, um, how they built their schedules, um, because that'll tell us if that class is at forty or, or more. This year-
But I understood all that, but here we are at budget time. Do we have that number to insert? Well, we have to consider that.
No, but we could, before you have to finalize everything, I think what Dr. Strickland's referring to is looking now at the master schedule built for next year and identify, where do we have large content level, on the core contents, such as social studies, and then bring that to you.
Yeah, we had that conversation this time last year.
So that, that's exactly what we have to do, kind of pull to see which classes are at that large, whatever the threshold you want to establish, see how many classes are there that are outside of like your music or PE like that.
What do you anticipate? Are you talking, a couple of teachers per building, or is it, do you have any way of anticipating?
It'd be hard, the challenge, because this year, our scheduling process should have been a little more efficient to help, we provide a little more support than we had in the past. But I'm trying to do this from recollection from what it was last year. I think it averaged at maybe about two teachers per building, and that's on the high end. I think it would be like, because the classes that I think you're referencing are going to be more like your social studies or science. And I think if you added at least, take a social, a science teacher in a building or a social, if you added one teacher in there, you want to split that forty up to around twenty.
Okay, so the total number would be?
About two per building, which would explain all that.
About 1.90 dollars.
I did addition.
Two per building. What'd you say, Dr. Mather?
For twenty positions, so we knew that had to be-
No, no, two, two per building.
Be a hundred thousand dollars, a hundred ten thousand per building.
Okay, thank you.
I've done twenty positions.
So another two new ones.
Didn't you say you were going to work with the principals and the scheduling at each school to have them be a little bit more consistent with class sizes? Because there were a couple of them that were-
That were, were really large.
Off the chart.
Yes, yes. But I can, I can track that information down, try to give the board something more concrete to, to budget for, as I say.
Well, understandably, it won't be concrete, but we do have to-
And that's best.
Think forward in considering, there's another, there's probably a thousand different costs that we haven't considered, but that for one, if you're talking about kindergarten, those upper grades need attention. That's all I'm saying, there's some more figures that we need to consider.
You could estimate about two million dollars from what you've got, twenty four.
Got it, another two million.
What I just want to add, that might be important, in prior years, and I'm talking several years back, buildings would deliberately lower ratios in some contents, knowing that they were ballooning others. Ms. Page and Ms. Drew will remember that, and it's part of-
When I left, I averaged forty-five, and that made no sense. So I had to keep the reading and-
That's exactly, that's exactly how it is.
That, that practice is the one that we have to challenge, to make sure that those kinds of decisions aren't made. And so first, we do that before you add. You make sure that you're not artificially sending some classrooms that need to be twenty through the one, you know, in the forties, because you're trying to lower others. So it's, it's a balance.
And that's why it's a little ambiguous, because with better and more efficient, um, scheduling-
Right.
They wouldn't do exactly what you experienced in terms of-
But if you want to improve your reading in math scores, and that's been the push, then the others have to go up.
No, no, frankly, building principal-
We're not going to a certain degree.
Excuse me for interrupting, but the decision is, what intervention do I need in order to keep the classes smaller? So there are other tools besides just automatically growing.
Because see, for example, we, we, at those areas, at those grade levels, we insert targeted literacy instructor now, that helped reduce that, and at that time, we didn't have that resource. And so those, the media support in reading and math, or particular reading right now, they are being pulled out for that. And so this question will require us to assess, hey, are you efficiently scheduling students? And if you had the best you can, you have scenarios where it's forty, you need to know about how many more of those resources. That estimate was basically going to add a science and a social studies teacher to every building. Historically, those have been the number.
Dr. Strickland said you'd have that number for us at our next regular board meeting, just so the board can be informed what it would look like.
Like you said, best as I know right now, I have that.
Right, because I'm, I'm thinking, we have to consider, for lack of better word, because this is not the correct term, reserve funds for instruction, because come August, those numbers are, could be different.
Yeah.
And so if we haven't taken that into consideration, I don't know where Dr. Mather's can find two million dollars after August or September, but if we consider it now, one would think, um, if, if we're thinking instruction, instruction, those are, because there's other topics related to instruction, related to improving outcomes, that we have not considered. But if we can, if we can at least throw them out there, then, and if, like you said, if you find additional funds, and for some reason, what I say to you, we win the lottery or something, or windfall, that's what it was, if we get a windfall, then, um, we have identified places for it to go. That's all I'm suggesting, that we think proactively.
So for this particular slide, if, if the number is twenty, then board, just add two million dollars to your overall number here for today's purpose.
And that's just instruction. That, that's up here where, someplace, I mean, they're dealing with this.
Forget for very tough, couldn't get it. This is the add list, dangerous decisions list, so we don't forget. I think that's a good description actually, what this list really is, is that, you know, you probably aren't going to be able to find everything, but if you have a windfall, at some point, you gotta be thinking about what is, what direction you want to be going towards, so. The other thing was a school, I've called them child psychologists, I think that's what we all called them. Essentially, the ratio is the same as if it was a social worker, and I'm guessing a little bit. Special education has school psychologists, but again, they're special education school sites, work on IP, special ed students, so I want you to be aware that there's twenty-six, I'm counting them, so that's your dollar figure. For child psychologists, my estimates are a little bit higher because I don't know the predictions of what that would be, so, again, those are just estimates. One per building, I'm saying right now, the second option.
Are those twenty-six existing? And I know the answer should be yes. Include those pre-K kids we have, or this, I mean, you already said Head Start has their, has their own group of, has their own group of child psychologists, but do we-
All special ed, is that over there?
I'm sorry.
Any grade level, plus, it could be pre-K, you talk, special education, does a student has IP. School psychologists will be covering thirty-one.
I guess my question with Dr. Mayne is, the Head Start-
Head Start has their own family community liaisons. Students are, if they are potential special ed students, special ed co-op, school psychologists would take care of them. It's all part of the child line.
Okay. So obviously, if little, little Rob over here is just cutting up in trees and cades, somebody has not-
She has some complicated or interventionist.
Yeah, but if little Rob continues to destroy the, the room every day, somebody's not taking a look at little Rob.
Well, they might be, they may just not have figured out the right strategy to stop it.
Yeah. Come on, Rob is very difficult. Yeah, he's quite a challenge.
So those are all the most of the things that I think that, did I miss anything that you all had asked about? Could I try to, do I take notes?
No, you've covered what we asked, but I'd like to add one. And I know, again, I know what the rule is, but the program that the minister was here about, he said he had presented some things to Dr. Mayne, and they needed help in terms of transportation, and they wanted to utilize the facilities for summer cohort that they're providing for at least 150 of our kids.
We are working through facility requests through our, um, regular process.
But he had mentioned that they got an invoice for sixteen thousand dollars, and he was saying there's no way they could do that. Is there any way we could look at that and try to help them in some kind of way? Now, I'm just saying what he said, I wasn't at the meeting, I'm just quoting what I heard.
He would have to pay for additional custodial or any security costs, those, unless the board starts absorbing those, which Dr. Mather reminds us, for programs that are not ours, we cannot. That's what that bill would have been for, would not have been for the use of the building.
That's true.
So if, if programs that are terrific like that want to utilize our buildings, and they will do it when our buildings are already opened and staffed, that helps them with that cost. But we're working through that with him. Now, in terms of request for transportation funding, that is several years old, so we'd need to revisit that. But we can do that.
Is, is the increase for classified including, does it include, does that line item include the security guards?
For all classified, the line, what line are you looking at?
Oh, just the, you asked, have we forgotten anything? When I talked about security guards, and adding security guards, is that included in that classified?
If the classified line is an increase for existing law enforcement officers, but not the added security guards.
Okay, so that's something we may put on the list of the provision costs. If we wanted to look closer at, um, what some of the school libraries need, would that come out of general fund, or would that come out of library fund?
General fund, for school libraries.
Right, so where, where would that come in, in this, any of that in this list? Any instructional costs, any place, would we, would we get to that?
These are all adds, so everything else is funded, if it's something in addition for school library that they need, then we would need to add it to the add list.
So we will-
They receive a budget for school libraries currently.
So we will see existing budgets?
We like to see existing budgets.
So that gives the life, is, is there a library line item in existing budgets?
School library line, there is.
Okay.
Separate from the public library, which is a different budget for that.
Okay, so departmental budgets, we, we need to look at.
Okay.
Where are we with Dr. Mather? What do you need?
Just want to make sure we didn't miss anything else. So I've added some other things up here too, I wanted to talk about briefly, things that we all, I've heard you all talk about, things that I just want to reiterate to the front of you. One is this additional 1.5 million is for special education for Senate Bill 423, no additional costs offset, we added for special education funding for those positions. Uh, just want, always to keep it in front of you.
Those, the ten positions.
Those actually will be for special education funding, that's not the ten-
Comes in special ed.
Special ed funding. You'll see that line broke out from Senate Bill 423. I talk about this a lot, and I'll just keep talking about it until I'm blue in the face, because this time next year, I'm going to be standing up here going, we need cash for the supplemental general fund for the next fiscal year, so I'm just forecasting a year out. Just gotta keep, I don't know what that dollar amount will be, but I'm just gonna land where we've been landing. I think we need to be building in this, I don't know, rotation for metal detectors, so I put some information up there for you. We have been buying them as needed in the x-ray machines, we're just starting to see that they're getting pre-aged, so we'll be able to keep up, but I would recommend about a hundred, twenty thousand dollars or so per year, just in a rotation in your budget. I put up the softball team for J.C. Harman, because we'll have some cost to that right now, I'm estimating that a little bit. Um, the majority of that cost really will be is if we have to set up a field for them, which we're looking at, kind of close to the current stadium, so they can have their softball team. And then I wanted to put Sumner Field back up here because, we talked about that. You guys know, people, I can't remember who on the board asked about the Sumner football field, and when they would in fact be getting a turf field, there were only high school left. We've been looking at that for over a year. And I put this in your handout too, so you can see it. Back in October, we got estimates, and it is an estimate, it's what they call a rough order of magnitude, over twelve million dollars in order to do the infrastructure for Sumner's field. And that's everything, seating, parking, field, track, concession stand, all of it. You can see it there, I'm just showing it to you. We have uncovered, we need to take care of the turf field. That, that we're ready to do, and we could probably redo their track. The dilemma that we're facing right now is that I don't want to move forward with that until this body decides what we're going to do with the entire infrastructure. So if we put in a brand-new turf field and a track, and then we want to go in and change seating and all that, it might damage the track and the field. So I'm just trying to do it in an order that makes sense. We can put just the field, and it took us about, what, over a year in fact, trying to finally get the sewer line thing figured out, identified government, because there is a sewer line that runs directly under their field. We didn't want to put a million-dollar investment on that field and have it tear, torn up, it could leaks, so they've lined it, so don't ask me the correct language, I can't.
When they did the bond, you would think that would have been included, it was just with that. have been included, it was just with that, you would think, now, I'm just asking.
It's not because the state aid is not available on athletic facilities, so it was not included because it's not looked upon favorably by our state legislated body. So it was specifically carved out. So what's your question for the board in terms of this particular project?
I want, I just want you to be aware, my specific question is, should we go ahead and proceed with the field, which we can, we've got the money.
The money's already there for the field.
Not having money for you.
When did we uncover the funds?
This last year, we talked about it, back at the beginning of the year, we've been waiting to kind of see what this infrastructure.
January 2017?
This fiscal year.
July, or the July? July 2017.
So there are no lights.
Yeah, there's no lights.
Stadium hasn't been upgraded for a long time, theirs, and the facilities around the fieldhouse concessions would need to be upgraded significantly. For me, they can use the field if it had lights, but there are no lights, so they'll be restricted to the amount of time that they can use it unless we provide for that lighting as a minimum step, so. How do we do that, Dr. Mather, do you have recommendations for the board?
You know, my recommendation is just as I said, we've uncovered that money, it's not an added cost, I think we should probably proceed with the field and the track, get that updated, I'm a little bit hesitant because I don't know what the infrastructure will be, we can't, I don't think the board can afford a $12 million change to that field, so at least they can get the field.
One step at a time then.
You know, one step at a time, protect it.
How would upgrades compare to the others, not the Schlegel, wherever we are, this, but with Washington and Harmon?
Well, we've been doing on all the other high schools is adding the turf field and the track, upgrade the track.
But, you're saying, but you didn't say track first.
The difference in the other facilities is that they were maintained over time with updates, like at the Wyandotte facility, we did some specific things several years ago. The Sumner stadium has not been touched for a while.
And keep in mind, you still have public uncomfortableness by not having access, remember?
They all have access, except, I know, I heard that too, except for Art Lawrence, I validated that after your listening session, that they are all open, with the exception of Art Lawrence and Schlegel because of the isolation.
Okay, so I'm just saying, as we think through this, there's always this, one, if it hasn't been maintained, it hasn't been upgraded, so that's the basic argument. But then the counterargument is that, oh, Sumner gets everything. So with that in mind, again, we have to have the conversation to counter the negative, you're going to spend X amount, that man, if they say $50, you're going to spend $50 on Sumner, when Washington and Schlegel and blah, 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 you can't say that about Schlegel at all.
Keep in mind that we've done all the other stadiums for every other school except for Sumner, so in this case, Sumner's the last one to come onboard.
And those are the talking points that we need to know as well as in our, to make our decision.
So proceed with the field and the track. One step at a time, then we'll work on the infrastructure as we can, is that what I'm hearing?
But come with the figures first, because you could do anything.
Well, you'll have to approve the expenditures, so as the field and the track, if you want Dr. Mather and her team to proceed, all of that will come before you for official approval.
Right, don't, I mean, you're itemizing, when you say proceed, it's not great ground.
Right, we've got to go out and give the estimates.
Get bids, all of that.
That's not including light?
No, it's only the track and the turf.
So they still couldn't play there at night?
Right.
They still couldn't play there at night then? No, because of the lights.
Guess what, don't you?
A lot of lights.
Well, and then. Sumner plays at Wyandotte.
I think the same thing with you looking at, trying to make improvements for the field, for the Harmon softball, and then just coming up at Sumner, you see, people will begin to see that we're moving in a very positive direction.
I have to get actuals on Harmon too.
That's the talking point.
We have to have the talking points, because we're going, I don't think you'd even buy the grocery store, you'd have to buy the gas pump, do you?
No, every time I go to the grocery store, I need run into somebody.
Okay, well, we meet them every day, so.
I said, I'll come up parallel, so people know where I'm at.
So Ms. Spears, we put that on our list, talk about talking points for the facility upgrades to the athletic facilities, that then we'll get to you also, you'll have the facts.
So it's a pretty exhaustive list of things that have been talked about, requests to look at different dollar figures, giving you the places, I gave you all of the dollars upfront of where I knew we could get money, which was about $11 million. These are the only other possible revenue sources in your current budget. One is a special revenue fund, if you recall, I shared with that with you last time, that is what we, the board funds their work comp, we're self-funded, so we keep money in there, about $6 million that we've been told to keep in that budget, from an actuarial perspective. So we have about six and a half right now. We've been spending about $1.5 million on work comp claims annually, that's been a pretty consistent trend. Right now, we're a little bit lower than that, so I'm estimating it about 1.1, that drops your balance in that fund to 5.4. Historically in the past, we've transferred money into this fund too, because we've got to keep it there for the next year, you're going to spend another million and a half. The next year after that, you're going to spend another million and a half. At some point, you either got to transfer money in, or it's going to run out. But I think that there might be some relief here. I would not recommend more than $1 million coming off of here, because that will put you at $4.4 million, potentially $4 million, if we get to the $1.5 in cost, I think that's pretty low. Here are the ones, your contingency fund, so you have $17 million in it, I took the million off when I put the needed funds, so now you have $16 million, really you have 17, but $16 million, so there's room there. Remember, if you put things out in contingency, that once you take it out, it's gone, so it's not, it doesn't regenerate unless you all put money in contingency. So things that are reoccurring costs, like salaries and things like that, if we have to keep using those dollars, it will deplete as well. Those are the possible funds to add.
And where can you get additional funds to refill the contingency?
Your general fund, so all those adds, you'd have to take something from your general fund, put it in.
No, current, you have, you never, you never have any additional funds from any other sources that you can stick in to contingency?
Not contingency.
Not legal. And FYI, Dr. Lane always adds, when it gets tied into PICA, there are certain legislators that look at these contingency funds and want to sweep them, because they say they are state dollars, whether they are or not. At most point, they're not.
And they make a big deal out of it if you can.
So I always also say, add a little caveat, and remember, this is your savings, right? Catastrophic events, you know, we aren't sure, so we do a miniature, so I'm not trying to scare anybody, but I think this would be for, and payroll, but I think you have some room to fund some things if you want to. But one payroll is one month of payroll, it is 16 million. This is a reminder, say it every time. Questions about that? So there we are. Lots of stuff, that was good, dude, just click on that.
While they're doing that, board, do you need to get a stretch? Everybody good?
All right, very well, I'm trying to get to an active spreadsheet. What I'd like to do on the active spreadsheet, it's working, I tried it earlier, but I don't know what I'm doing on technology. What the active spreadsheet really does is I can actually show you a spreadsheet, and we can actually show you your revenues, and we can start some tracking things, so you can kind of see balances, so just give me a minute, I'll get the spreadsheet.
You don't stand it. Take a couple steps out and come on back. I was going to say something to you about that, because I'm sitting up here, nothing next thing, she ain't having nothing.
Yeah, you cover all of it.
To the hell of the mountain.
Did you read the executive session, do you want to say a few things, and then we'll go back into her spreadsheet?
Oh, that's not including, which one is it?
Yeah, it is.
Oh.
Okay, so Dr. Mather, Kristen will stay.
I read that point then.
Yeah.
Okay, we're at the point of the executive session, and I need a motion for the board to reset into executive session for how long, Dr. Mather, how long?
Probably about 15 minutes.
1:45 for 15 minutes to come back at 2 o'clock to discuss budget for, pursuant to the exception for the employee-employee negotiation under Kansas Open Meeting Act. The meeting will resume at 2 o'clock with no action to follow. Motion's been made by one, second by the other, any others come in? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye aye.
All those opposed and hearing none, so ordered. Who needs to stay?
Dr. Mather and Ms. Woodbury.
Dr. Mather and Ms. Woodbury.
So as I was saying, I think the easiest way to look at this is essentially, it's kind of flat, with the things that you have to must fund and keep going over. So anything else that you want to add, we have to come up with the money to do that. That's the easiest way to think about this, I think, right now. Is there anything that particularly stands out on the list that you'd ask about, that you want to reference?
The numbers on the counselors, all of that, we may have to cut down. Add a few, and maybe each year try to add, build up, because I don't think realistically we can use, add all of that.
What's important is that on page 21, that whole list, it has $11 million of the adds, of course you have a duplication in two of them, because you wouldn't do social workers times 32 plus times 11, depending on which option you choose. So you could basically say there's $9 million of the adds here, say you want. If you want that everything on this list, it'd be $9 million that we have to find somewhere in the budget. And what I was suggesting is that the only place you have money in the budget is your contingency reserve and your special reserve fund.
So, board, is it helpful to look at this list and talk about what's your number one priority of an add that you want to make? Of all the things that you see here, what's most important? The alternative system you might consider as a high priority because of the changes that you made to the code, tell us that, and rightfully so, that we need to do something different for a group of kids, so that's, you might think about it that way.
I think that's a good place to start with alternative, because, like you said, we looked at the Code of Conduct, and we've made some changes, and so to have something in place for students, if they are not following the Code of Conduct, would be the best thing, because that would put their priorities first.
So does that rise for you, Ms. Drew, in front of adding counselors, for example, that would be something that you want us to put at the top of the list?
Yes, and I like what Ms. Page said about gradually moving in that direction.
See, I had a little caveat to that, that if we try to be proactive, and priority being the psychologists, the social workers with the counselor, perhaps you can negotiate them off of the ledge before you have to send them to the alternative school.
Okay, that's my thought too. Put the money to the social workers and the psychologists to work with them. So you're switching.
Yeah, but not so much with you, because we've got to have that additional, I mean, it comes back to what Ms. Page said, instead, this, Dr. Mather, tell me again, this double entry, Vanessa's say, 43 social workers.
Yeah, 42.
Okay, so that's, we're not going double, but that, and at the time, come back to what I said here before, we've got the cafeteria plan, so in case, instead of getting a full apple, I'm going to have to get a half, half apple, I'm going to have to get a little cottage cheese, and I'm going to have to get a little, we're going to share a package of chips, but what I said to, in the group, if we make a commitment to the teachers, that we're trying our best to reduce that hostile learning environment, and with that Code of Conduct, I mean, it puts pressure on administrators, everybody, and the social workers, maybe, and it's a big maybe, there won't be so much absenteeism, maybe there won't be so much violence.
Let me say that when Schlegel had their open house, you know, the family night, I sat in on a counselor's reformative, and what she's training the teachers as well as the other administrators, it keeps them from being, kicking them out of the school, and letting the counselors and everything talk to the kids to realize the different things, and it keeps them in school, and it changes the behavior of the students.
So your top priority would be the counselors and social workers and school psychologists, is it an alternative setting?
It keeps them from going to alternative schools.
I would say, no, they're all top priority.
Right, but it keeps the kids from going to alternative schools, is what it's supposed to do.
Because there's some that have to get out of that classroom.
I think it's a stigma that could be put on the kid in elementary school, and middle school, be sent to the alternative school versus working with them in their class, in their building. Maybe it's an alternative setting in the building. But it'd be a progressive movement?
It could.
It would be proactive, working before it gets so bad.
Here's how I'd have you think about that, the funding for alternative would be funding not to exceed, and then you would expect the team to bring back, here's the plan for how we're going to use that, because it might be a location, a school, but it also might be an individual plan for a kid who needs something. But what I'm hearing you say is, social workers and counselors are something that you want to advance to the fund list. So let me ask you, 11, the funding for 11 social workers, or the funding for full service? So that's.
Please understand the 11, now, so you'd have the 10 from the mental health on top of that, so that's a nice amount.
That's a good point.
Because it puts one, we're in two elementary schools, so it's about to be higher than the other.
So you could do the 11, and not place those 11 in the schools that are in the pilot, is what you're saying?
Might be 11 additional to the pilot.
Okay, but clarity, I thought the special program that's funded by the state was just for special ed students. It opened for anybody.
For those, that list of schools that were on the list, or in that pilot?
Just from what I read in the paper, it didn't say everybody. It said they had, they were special ed kids.
They live in suits.
They will not, you already signed through the co-op board, 20 social workers that work only in special ed, that doesn't change.
This grant.
This is not that.
It's for everybody.
It is for, yes, it's for non-special ed kids, and it's in those schools that are on the list.
Yeah, it's on the list.
So you could go with the option of 11 social workers, the $5.25 money, because you're going to have 10 others through that pilot.
That puts one social worker for every two elementary schools.
Okay, so, what about counselors? And really, the plan will be brought back to you, it's the amount of money you want to put towards that, that is the decision today.
When I visited Vidia two years ago, I was in a classroom, and a lot of the teachers were telling me how much they value the counselors coming in and working in their classes, what a difference it made in referrals to the office, with kids getting along with each other. They said they couldn't do it without the counselors. They really appreciate having them come and work in their classes, and it helped them all around. So, I think we need to up the counselors.
Every one of the councilors in the line here, high schools have three, all of them. And we're on our department, there's a group that, middle schools have counselors, all the large elementary schools have two, every elementary school has a little. And every middle school has, there's 13, so they'll have two.
You know, I'm thrilled with what we have, minus the double entry there, because, and I'm trading lightly and respectfully, there could be savings in the current budget. There could be savings in the money that we haven't looked at, that, and we haven't seen that. So, I don't like being asked to prioritize this right now, because we have worked so hard and say they're all important, but, you know, we haven't seen the big picture. We haven't seen all the money.
Let me respond to that. Your administrator's job is to bring you a framework to respond to, and as we've gone through the budget in this difficult time with school finance over the last 10 years, we've cut and cut and cut. So, Dr. Mather and I have not brought you a cut plan in order to redirect money, because we believe the things that you're currently funding are needed, required.
Well, good, and I'd like to see what we're currently funding.
Well, we can do that.
But I think there could be savings.
I don't think you're gonna be able to absorb $9 million worth of ads in reducing current expenditures, unless you're gonna cut positions, which I don't think the board wants to cut positions. Really, the budget, it's large, but it is being used very efficiently right now. There's always a decision here or there that you can make differently, but I don't think it's realistic to think we'll find $9 million worth of redirections.
You didn't have to find $9 million, we're not.
But I thought that's what I heard you say by all of the things on the list. Yeah, they're all important, but what is most important, I think, is what we're trying to drive at right now.
Well, I think that's a small change, the 525.
You're talking to child psychologists.
And, you know, we will, we will, I'm willing to reduce numbers, but I'm not willing to say we won't have counselors, we'll just have social workers, we won't have psychologists, we won't have alternative schools. Our classrooms and instruction are key, and I think we need to provide support to our teachers and our administrators.
No doubt, no doubt we do. So, talk more about what you're looking for with child psychologists. Those are PhD-level positions in order to do therapy. Certainly might be necessary, but what are you hoping that the outcomes will be for those positions?
How many does this to me give?
I think it was the exact same breakdown, so that would have been, I think, the two, one for every two elementary schools and one for every level. But it's any type, probably one per school.
I'm just saying, you know, taking half isn't, being frugal, taking half of some of these.
I would say with the child psychologists, half of them.
Page 36.
36.
I did two same way, I did social workers, so either 42 at the top, which is one person, only not counted for school. And then the second option, which is one for every two elementary schools, one person.
And the 26 are already covered by spade, sunroof.
No, those are different. Those are school psychologists, they aren't child psychologists. So, school psychologist, child psychologist, trained completely different. School psychs have a master's, child psychs require a PhD medical degree. You're talking about therapy, people to do therapy.
We don't have a page.
Yeah, these are not school psychs, as I understand it. They're therapeutics.
Okay, is it possible we could use them only for the 6 through 8 and 9 through 12 with the social workers and counselors in the elementary?
What are you asking? Is the 2.25 figure for the child psychologists or for the school psychologists?
Child psychs, these are not school psychs.
Okay, so what question did you ask?
I just want to make sure that we're talking the same thing. School psychs and child psychologists are two different things.
So, there's nothing on this list that talks about school psychs?
That's right. They're all paid for through the co-op.
So, that's not in our discussion?
Right. If you want, my impression is what you were trying to achieve is people that can do therapy onsite with kids, is that right?
We haven't had any figures on that thing.
You do, you have two.
I thought you said that was a PhD-level.
That's what this is. Just wanted to point out, these are not school psychologists as we know them.
I pointed out the school psychologists, because I didn't want to say we already have 20 school psychs. Those are suffering. We do have 26 school psychologists, very different.
Just wrote it.
Yeah, these are just higher-level child psychologists, is what you asked about.
You might be able to provide that therapeutic service without employing folks full-time by engaging in a partnership with a mental health organization who already has these folks on staff at a much lower cost, that's why I'm bringing that up. So, it still allow you to provide the resource to your buildings, but not have to employ them, find them, frankly, I don't know how you're gonna even find 10 of these folks to do this work.
This is 42 or 27?
Either one. 23 million, 117.
Some of you are, have these folks on staff. So, you could cut it down significantly, maybe even to half a million dollars in the contract way to address the needs of the kids.
I'd say cut in half and budget for it and see what you get. If you get something less, then you have a savings. Cutting half would be 12. Because you've got 27 down here.
So, you're talking about filling positions then, when you say 12 or 13, you kind of doesn't matter? Or are you talking about contractual?
I'm not talking contractual. And there's a commitment, even if you have five, we have people on staff, you don't have to call and say, can you get here tomorrow? We've got somebody, can you get here in 15 minutes? Leave another school, get another day.
So, you're saying that they wouldn't be assigned to a school?
Well, they'd be deployed by administrative staff recommendations, but fewer than one per building, is what I'm hearing, much fewer as a resource to be shared across the system.
And own call as needed.
Well, employees of the district.
Yeah, I mean ours.
And I spoke with an elementary teacher last night, just said, couldn't some of the Wednesday meetings, bring in these sites, and they can give us some tips on how to deal with some of these kids?
Professional learning.
Yeah, because they're traumatized. How do we do with them? We haven't been trained, and you don't want to say the wrong thing, and you want to do what you can to help them. I mean, every day, some of our kids were at, you know, Friday where they had the shooting. So, when they come back to school, that trauma, you know, they're going through all kinds of different changes, and we're trying to teach them, and their stuff, my aunt's funeral, someone shot at the casket, two people got shot, they shouldn't have to do that.
So, let me ask, just for budget reasons, a half, cut this $2 million and a half.
Yep. So, we've got 1.25.
So, what did you decide about counselors now?
If you're going to get keep your ratio, you can't cut that number.
Where is the greatest need for counselors? Would it be at the elementary level, the middle school level, or the high school level? Because what I'm thinking is, wherever it is, if we could probably cut that number down, and wherever it should be.
You'd have to go through the trenches and find out. I'm not in the trenches.
I think your data will tell you, your suspension data tells you the greatest need is middle school.
That's the issue, where they get to middle school.
Yeah, four, five and up, four, five days.
So, could we balance to increase the number of counselors at that level as opposed to the other two?
It's all about distribution, because, you know, we've got folks hanging from the rafters at Washington and Slaygo, somebody need to get there. But if you have nobody at, was it School Parker, who has 100 kids?
But that's because it was not put in place beforehand, but if we start at a level that we can address those issues.
I don't think we can, I'll answer your question, 30 is two per school now, whatever your ratio that you wanted to establish, and I don't know what page it's on, you know, cut five, you can cut, in my opinion, you can nickel and dime cut, and you can come up with a pretty good amount. It's not enough. But if nickel and dime, you know, the teachers are, told you, these, like we're saying, some kids are not going to work out in that environment.
Well, hearing that.
It needs to be an alternative.
Hearing that, I'm wondering if you focus your counselor support on the middle level and then the alternative options at the high school level. I mean, you don't have, you'll want to have a few alternative options at elementary and middle, but the majority go to that high school level where there is a need.
I guess I was about to, Ms. Drew's question, what's the role of the counselor?
Well, the role of these counselors, as we have changed counselors over time, would be to be working directly with kids on their issues, not sitting in an office on schedule.
Okay, what's the difference between social worker and a counselor?
Social workers provide resources and direct families to resources. They are not therapists, they're resource providers.
And then the child psychologist is the serious.
They will do the therapy. So, you could have a whole hierarchy of intervention. First, I'll try to help the family social worker, and we'll do some onsite counseling, school counselor. If that doesn't work, you go to your next level.
And that's why I go back to your question, Ms. Drew, I don't think we can say what's the, for us who are out, or not in classroom, what is the choke point? And any given day, choke point could be any place.
But I think what we ought to also look at is, we're trying to change the paradigm.
Yes.
And so, we have to start somewhere. Page 29 gives the total number of counselors that are current within, and so, it seems like now the greater number is within the elementary schools, but look how many are within middle. And if we're going to change the paradigm, then we can balance it, whereas she would have the child psychologists, you could have, still have counselors there for elementary as well as the social workers, but let's increase the number in middle school. And eventually, in high school, we can gradually work toward that direction.
Let me understand, let me ask you for a clear clarity for what you just said. Currently, there's the big numbers at elementary.
Yes.
Do we know if it's working?
I don't know that, I'm just looking at the numbers that is given here. Because again, we're trying, we're going to try to change paradigm to make things better.
So, if it's working, we want to change the paradigm, would we change the number at elementary?
I think we can, if it's working, I think we could decrease the number of counselors there and move them into middle school.
Good answer. All right, so that could get the back.
I wouldn't decrease the numbers at elementary, because that position is vital, and if you decrease it, then you're gonna back off on services. But you could increase positions at the middle level. Focus that additional school counselor work at middle school. Focus some additional support for alternatives at the high school. Have options for the other levels, but the high school is where those options seem to be most critical, alternative.
So, at the end of the discussion, what number does that come up to? Not 30, but how many?
You've got eight, eight middle.
And you also have to combine the two, so you add 37 counselors.
Eight, eight middle schools, how many already have two?
All of them will have two, except for West and Corinna, which are combined, so those two will come together.
That's right, so that's why you have seven. So, you could add seven more counselors at middle school and really have a good.
See, these are, these are new numbers.
On page 21.
Yeah.
Right.
So, this is 30 additional. On page 21, right?
That's right, 21 are ads.
30 additional, so maybe only 15 additional. You have still, don't have people covered now?
Or you were talking about middle schools, that's why I said seven. Eventually, you have seven middle schools, so you want to add seven more, just from middle school.
So, 15?
Yeah.
We can't do the whole thing?
No, but don't forget, people are in place now.
Yeah.
This is on top.
That's what I'm saying, add the 15, because you can't pay for the 30, you know, with the funding the way it is for right now.
And we still have to find the funding for these, every position, these are all ads.
These are ads.
These are all current.
But just take care of the people who are there.
So, can you change, you suggesting change it from 30 counselors to 15 or seven?
15.
15.
Now, where you're putting is where you find the greatest need. We're not telling you where to put it.
Why not seven?
I don't think you can, you can.
Well, you have existing problems already at the high school, so they need some help. Something's wrong. We can't sit here and pretend that nothing is wrong, so they need some assistance, and we do think that at the middle school or elementary, you need to try to do something there for a little bit more. But definitely in the high school, they're struggling trying to figure it out, and one counselor wouldn't be enough, or two, I think.
They already have three counselors.
But you want to store in middle schools, so by 10, they get to high school, they won't have the professors.
But you've got some high schools already.
They have one, calling it a career.
So, Ms. Drew, you're.
My thinking is, we hold the counselors at the elementary, the way they are, and like you said, increase by at least seven to the middle school, so that we have one more for each middle school, or something like that. And then, we increase the alternative options at the high school level for the kids who just don't, just don't fit. And maybe be proactive, wait until they're in trouble, maybe if a kid that really needs to be in that accelerated program, like Bridges or Gateway or something, to get it into them before they have a problem.
Well, now, I wasn't thinking about that, but when Ms. Page mentioned about the problems are there, I was thinking of splitting the number of those seven.
Okay.
Some to the middle schools, some to the high school, like four to the high school, three to middle school. Possibly fluctuate their schedule, whereas they could, one person be responsible for two schools. I don't know, just go on something else.
Why don't we plan for 15? Because we're gonna have to bring back the options on where we're gonna get this money for you, which is gonna be cutting somewhere else, which goes to what Dr. Wim was talking about. So, we'll plan for 15, and then we can always look at a different plan.
Okay.
What about that alternative? And I'm gonna call it option, so it's not necessarily school, because, you know, some value for you. Yeah. It may not be in the best interest just to create a school where all children with challenges go, but maybe options for them, virtual, all kinds of things. Right now, Dr. Mather and Ms. Woodbury have planned for 1.3 plus the expansion of Fairfax Learning Center, another 225. I would encourage you to keep that as it is, and let us bring back a plan on how we use that if we can find a way to fund it, because you need options.
Our kids need options, why don't they, should they go to the extension?
Some kids need options.
Can we keep the community garden?
What is the community garden?
Okay, we have it at, I know it's at Northwest, it's at.
About 13, 14 schools.
And they come in and teach them, and they grow vegetables, they teach them how to garden.
Who does that now?
It's with the academy.
Marshall Palomar's program.
Okay, so they're already doing that for us?
Yeah.
For our kids, so.
We would contract for the principals to come in and do it at the school.
Actually, we'd have to hire that another.
That they're already doing that, they don't want to fund it anymore?
Well, she's struggling with that piece, to pay for that. Well, she's struggling with that piece to pay for that. And since they have three-hundred-and-fifty of our kids, it's all, just seemed a natural thing to support her.
You know...
Three-hundred-and-fifty out of twenty-two thousand?
Let me say, this is, it's a wonderful program, it all goes into your priorities, you know, because you're truly gonna have to make some difficult decisions as we get closer to this budget.
And we could ask them to expand it to growing vegetables, and I can't remember the name, in water.
Hydroponics.
Hydroponics, yeah. I just don't think that's a high priority in the area. But it's another group that's already joining that, maybe, maybe she can get outside funding.
She is already, you're okay, she's dealing with some...
If they don't get it, they're gonna have to disband.
Well, let's put it on the list, and then we'll bring back, in order to do it, here's what we have to eliminate, cut. Is that fair?
And make sure they related more to STEM, that, that gets you over the finish line.
Well, it'll get us over the finish line if we find a way to find it.
Of course.
Yeah, yeah. So, so the things that we put on the list are in addition to the other things that we talked about a little bit ago, in terms of your increase.
Maybe, we just scratched the second entry of social work, we've cut the counselors in half, we've cut the child psychologists down to twelve. This people-teacher ratio, K through one, are our numbers increasing, K through one?
Uh...
I think they probably are.
Well, they've been fairly stable for the last two or three years, K through one numbers, Dr. Mather. Remember, your committee wanted to spend a year really looking at how we deploy additional teachers, because you're gonna have a real facilities challenge trying to add teachers next year. You don't have space, frankly. So, if this is one that you want to keep on the list, but not fund for this year, I think you'd be wise to really study, how, how will you deploy nineteen, seventeen more teachers at K one? How will you do it? Will they be team teaching if there's not space in the building? How will you do it?
Kids losing art and music grounds.
Potentially, yeah. But that doesn't mean those kids are all K one.
No, no. But it's just, you know, our new schools.
When you build a new building, people move into the neighborhood.
Yeah. Probably just cut the funds in half, because if you come back and, excuse me, and you have just an influx, something's gonna have to...
Well, you won't be able to equitably distribute if you don't do a consistent ratio.
By seventeen, by...
One to nineteen across all K one.
Can't cut it down.
You can't really.
Amount.
Now, you are always wise to set aside some funding for those unknown, unpredictable things like increases, so, but that's, that's not...
Is that itemized, put, this is seventeen, what ten costs, is that itemized on certain page?
You have to have seventeen in order to address all K one.
Right.
Now, you could just go kindergarten, if you wanna find a way to reduce that nine-hundred-and-forty-seven, then we could look at a lower ratio kindergarten only. But again, you're gonna have some facility challenges that we just...
You just need to, I'd say, keep kindergarten and first grade.
Depends on the building. Dr. Mather reminds me, kids don't come in neat packages, they don't come in twenty-one and...
Is that a kindergarten?
Thirty-four.
Because that, where will we, that's down there on Tenth Street. Where will we, where, even the trailers will...
Oh, those Kinley. I mean, Emmy Pearson.
Emmy Pearson, that place is packed.
That won't get rid of trailers. You don't have, you don't have enough physical capacity at Emmy Pearson.
Emmy Pearson.
You need to add on at some point.
You need another whole school at it.
Thank you.
Page thirty-four.
Reminds us what we're looking at, Dr. Mather, so for kindergarten, so down below, lots of light, kindergarten, first graders, the highlight ones, the nineteen-to-one, that we were talking about. So, if you wanted to do a twenty-to-one, you could add eight MTEs, some four-hundred-and-fifty thousand.
Thank you, sitting here.
You want to add...
Twenty-one, so that's...
Always.
Okay, so leave it on the list, but change it to kindergarten only, one to twenty?
I think the body, the body, we could first grade up some?
Now I'm asking.
Yes, it's kindergarten first.
And first.
Okay, it's first, if we change it to one to twenty.
One to twenty, it's four-hundred-and-fifty thousand.
Okay.
What did, what did twelve child psychologists cost, with just in here, one million?
We'll estimate it with the south.
Let's do one million.
We're at eight-hundred-and-fifty thousand, eight ninety.
Almost at one-point-two million there.
Okay, so this gives us the information needed in order to go find the reduction plan that you're gonna need in order to provide these things.
So, that's your total down there right now, not including compensation. Two-point-eight million dollars.
We need two-point-eight more.
Three million dollars, yeah. And then if you add that compensation amount that we're talking about, you have to add that to it, that's on our stretch.
So, what, we cut the eleven million down to eight-point-nine, seven-point-two? I don't know, would you...
If you add all that up, it's about three million extra, so, well, we have to do three to one, about four or five.
How much are we getting from here?
That's what I'm saying, I'm gonna have to add that, but I'd probably say about four or five million.
Four million, seven million.
Because you take away the duplication, I'm just looking there, you've got three million plus you gotta put compensation on there somewhere, so, yeah, probably a million. Four-point-five million, maybe?
Four-point-seven.
Four-point-five?
So, we've reduced the eleven by four-point-five?
Well, you have to find the four-point-five. You have to find the eleven. We don't have eleven million dollars, but we have four-point-five, so, yes.
That's a better number, it's a much better number.
About four and a half million.
Gotcha, thank you.
Okay, made some progress.
So, on the department budgets, I gave you a list of every department and how much you get. You, I need to understand the detail and you need to make the decisions.
Where is that?
The other budget meetings, I gave you that list, and I showed you the whole general fund broken down by department, and I showed you the L of E.
It's not in here, it's not in here, we can't.
Previous budget.
Well, let's bring it back for you soon, yeah.
But I just need to know, is that enough detail so we can make this...
Keep in mind parameters versus I'm responding to a budget, so we don't... So, I would, I would guide that, let's start with that and see what questions come from it. The question, I guess, becomes one Ms. Westall can help us with, is when are we gonna meet again, people going through this process? And as, as Ms. Westall's looking for that, Dr. Mather and Ms. Woodbury, we'll need some time to now go back and pull some recommendations for reductions. So, let's know what kind of time you need for that. Plus, we need to meet with the library again in June, so we can review their budget and their facilities plan. So, Westall, anyway, we can squeeze in another May budget meeting, as we get out of May, it's really gonna put Ms. Woodbury and Dr. Mather behind the eight ball getting this budget done.
Yeah, we're watching graduation next month, I mean...
The last graduation is the twenty-second, right?
Twenty-third.
Twenty-third.
Fairfax is twenty-third.
We do a...
Maybe that Thursday, the twenty-fourth.
At noon again, does that work for you all?
I think we do well in daylight.
Better, we don't melt so quickly.
Once we get into June, we get into all that...
This page still looks lively. Okay, so the twenty-fourth at noon.
Is that, sound good?
Yeah. It sounds like that is...
Hope it's next week, a week.
Is that okay?
It's a week and a half. So, a week and a half.
Dr. Mather?
A week from Thursday. That give you enough time, Dr. Mather?
I'm not sure. She's a little...
All right.
See, our regular board meeting is now at twenty-nine.
Right.
Let's try, let's have as much as we can.
Everybody got that?
Right, weren't you supposed to talk to us?
Huh?
Greg was supposed to talk to us.
Only if we got in trouble, only if we got in trouble.
Greg was supposed to talk to us for Wednesday.
He's out of town.
You can't channel Greg? No, I didn't say text him, I said channel him. Answer is no.
So, four-thirty to six-thirty, or is it five to seven?
I had it five to seven.
What is it, Kelly?
For what?
Wednesday meeting.
Five to seven is what I had, too.
Four-thirty to six-thirty.
Yeah, that's what they, they changed it.
I think they changed all Wednesday.
Well, whatever.
I'll send you an update email.
I don't think anything has changed that's brought me to my attention since the last time y'all talked about it.
Yeah, he's just going to bring the modified...
Okay.
Modified options.
I'll follow.
When Greg be back?
She'll be back tonight, I believe.
Call him in now, just jump in.
Anybody take, all masked people?
Yes.
What you need? No, I asked you all masked people, she said no. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move. Second.
So...
Thank you all very much, good discussion.